...followed by the public comment period. So, ways to comment during this meeting. There are comment cards and statement cards spread throughout the room. If you would like to comment on the master plan, which is the first portion of tonight, there's a written comment card that you can submit. You just write out and you put down how to speak. Or if you'd like to speak, you'll have a written statement card and just give it to someone on the side and CPRA is PR 18. And we'll go ahead and then you'll speak after the presentation. Anything with the annual plan? If you would just like to write a comment, there's white comment cards throughout the room. And for the state cards, if you want to give a personal statement, you can go on. We'll go through that all again. There's a lot of information. There's also information for me to be going, how to submit comments outside of this next meeting. So, with that, I will hand it over to Chip Klein.
Good evening, everybody. I wanted to first just thank everyone for being here tonight. My name is Chip Klein, Executive Assistant to Government Coastal Activities and Securing for the Sherwood. And this is still a long time coming. Many of you here tonight are very involved in the coastal program, stay up to date on our progress. And so, many of you know that the master plan really is the vision, the state's vision of the long-term sustainability of Louisiana. Twenty postal parish and thirty municipal offices all. So, if you were to pick up a copy of the draft master plan, number one, it would tell you about the risks that you face where you live and work. It would tell you about the risk to stop Louisiana if we do not implement a single restoration project within the next several years. But perhaps most importantly for tonight, it lists the project, it tells about the priorities for the state's coastal program over the next several years to protect coastal Louisiana. So, I would just encourage all of you, the phrase that I like to use is productive participation. Obviously, you're here tonight to make comments, but we're here tonight to hear from you. So, I would just encourage you to visit with staff, the secretary of staff, who you have here, you have our technical director, Bryn Haas, the executive director, Greg Randy, Stu Brown, that does our master plan team. If you have a question that cannot be answered tonight, you have the staff that we have here to work with. Okay? So, hopefully you all participated in the open house, had a good conversation. I do want to remind you, going back to the two-year policy goal, when that plan was in draft format, we want to do the public comment period both in 2012 and 2016. There were changes to the plan based upon what we heard from all of you. And so, I don't want you to think that you're just going to come up here and make a comment that's going to follow dead years. We do take these comments seriously. We do take them into consideration. And probably more often than not, there are changes to the plan based upon feedback that we receive. And so, Teraz talked a little bit about the master plan. So, that is the long-term, the 50-year vision of the state for the sustainability of South Louisiana. Just as important is the annual plan, which is our funding authorization for the next fiscal year. In fiscal year 23, we have had a record-breaking year of $1.3 billion, the most revenue we've had come in coastal programs since it was created back in 2005, 2006. In fiscal year 24, we are going to exceed that $1.3 billion mark, looking at an annual expenditure somewhere in the neighborhood of about $1.7 billion. So, master plan and long-term vision, annual plan is going to be the immediate priorities, the implementation sequencing of projects over the next three years. Three-year outlook on our revenues, again, executives, you'll have the opportunity to comment on both of those. One of the things that I hope is not lost on the public is we spend a lot of time in these meetings talking about the plan, the vision, the opportunity that's in front of the coastal program. But I hope you recognize the progress that the coastal program has made over the last several years. Since 2007, we secured close to $30 billion. We restored over 70 miles of barrier islands, restored close to 60,000 acres of new land, and constructed over 300 miles of levees. Put that in perspective, 300 miles of levees is approximately the distance of getting in your car and driving from Baton Rouge to Birmingham, Alabama. And so, there's been incredible progress made. I think that there's a lot to be proud of. But as we say in the coastal program, the opportunity that is in front of the coastal program because of the vision outlined in the master plan, because of the political will and the necessary funding, we have an opportunity in front of us that we will take full advantage of. And so, before I turn it back over to Stu, I do want to just thank the secretary of staff. I know people start to roll their eyes when I start thanking people who work in state government, but sometimes I don't think I even fully appreciate the amount of work that it takes us to get to this point. And as I said earlier, as soon as the 17 master plan was approved by the legislature, by the way unanimously approved, we've never had a master plan with a no vote in the legislature, which is unheard of in Louisiana politics when you're talking about prioritizing $50 billion. But as soon as that plan was approved, Stu and his team went to work on this plan. And so, there's just been an incredible amount of work. As I often say, I feel like the secretary of staff represents the best state government. And I'm just really proud of the team and the work that you all have done to get us to this point. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Stu, who's going to run through some slides on master plan, annual plan, and thank you, Gregory.
All right, thank you, Chip. I'm Stuart Brown. I manage the strategic planning grant at CPRA. We're responsible for the development of the coastal master plan. Before we get started, just to add to what Teraz mentioned earlier, we are accepting public comments through March 25th. There are four ways you can submit your public comments. Here in person, Teraz outlined the comment cards to make a comment into the microphone after this presentation. You can also send a public comment to masterplan@la.gov. We ask that you put a public comment in the subject line to help us sort through the emails. We also, if you have questions for us, you can also contact us there. We have a forum online that you can submit comments through. You can access it through that QR code or you can access it through our website. And lastly, you can mail comments to the address here on the screen. And we'll come back to this slide at the end of the presentation. So, many of you all, I suspect, are familiar with this, but just to set the stage for why we're here and why we have a master plan, coastal Louisiana has been experiencing a land loss crisis for nearly a century. We've lost almost 2,000 square miles of coastal wetlands since 1932. There are many causes for this land loss. Some of these are natural processes you'd expect to see in the systems that we're living in, but a lot of it is exacerbated by or caused by human activity. Land loss is, of course, a link in from a landscape and habitat perspective that directly impacts the fisheries and wildlife resources that depend on these wetlands, of course, then impacts the jobs and livelihoods that rely on those resources. Land change also impacts industries like agriculture, navigation, oil and gas, the industries that help make up a lot of the economy of South Louisiana. And of course, land loss also increases the flooding impacts of hurricanes and tropical storms that affect nearly all coastal communities. And the master plan is the guiding document to how we meet these challenges. So, what is the master plan? At its core, the master plan is a prioritization effort. How can the state spend its money most cost-effectively over the next 50 years to reduce storm surge-based flood risk and build and maintain coastal wetlands? Importantly, it is not a program or a funding source. We'll talk about some of those with the annual plan in a little bit. Again, it is a prioritization effort. As money becomes available through these different funding sources, these are the projects that we want to pursue. As money becomes available, these projects move into feasibility studies, engineering design, and ultimately, construction. Additionally, the master plan is developed through a process that ensures adaptive management. We're required to update this plan every six years. This process allows us to reevaluate the tools that we're using, allows us to incorporate the best available science, and it allows us to reevaluate the process that we're using to develop this plan. A lot of the changes that we've made from 2017 now has been based on feedback we got through the 2017 process and shortly after that plan was completed. It is built on world-class science and engineering, advances a comprehensive and integrated approach to restoration and risk reduction, it incorporates extensive public input and review, and this last bullet point is something that we are trying to emphasize with the master plan is that it illustrates how people and communities will experience a changing coast and allow for cooperation and adaptation. So, we know that the coast 20 and 50 years from now is going to look very different than the coast we have today, whether we're 100% successful in implementing these projects that we've identified or not. We also know that the project of having a resilient coast is much bigger than the restoration and risk reduction projects that CPRA implements, though that is a big piece of it. The project of having a resilient coast will be the result of countless decisions made by individuals, communities, businesses, local governments, all levels of government. And we want to make sure that the information that we produce as part of this plan is there to help inform those individuals and entities as they make those decisions about their future in coastal Louisiana. So, what's at stake are homes, our jobs, and our culture. The goal is to have a resilient coast in which people can continue to live and work and take advantage of all the things that make coastal Louisiana so economically, ecologically, and culturally valuable. So, looking forward through this process, the plan was released on January 6th. We will have public comments open through March 25th. We are here at the first of four public hearings we'll be having across the coast. Based on that feedback we get through this process, we'll be revising the draft plan and submitting a revised plan to the CPRA board for approval on April 19th. And the final plan will be submitted to the legislature following that approval. So, here I'm going to give a general overview of the process by which we identify and select projects to be included in the master plan. I know this is a busy figure. I think this is on page five of the plan, if you want to dive into it and any more detail. But the key for right now is those titles at the top, projects, modeling, and prioritization. We start with a suite of candidate projects. We model those projects to try to understand how it will perform over time. And then, we prioritize the suite of projects that is most beneficial in terms of reducing storm surge-based flood risk and building and maintaining coastal wetlands. So, again, we start with a suite of candidate projects. These come from past plans, they come from public solicitations. And for this master plan, we develop regional work groups to spend time developing new project concepts and also reevaluating some of the concepts that have been floating around for years that perhaps had areas where we could improve the project concept. We then take those projects and we model them. So, we use numerical models to understand how the landscape is going to change, how that changing landscape impacts storm surge, and how future damages that storm surge-based flooding would cause. So, we model these projects to understand how they'll perform over time under a range of future environmental conditions. And we compare this to a baseline in which we don't implement the projects that we call our future without action. So, we're comparing the impacts of our projects versus a future in which we don't implement those projects. And that's how we evaluate the benefits. And then, the final step is prioritization. So, the planning tool is really an optimization equation. So, the models give us the benefits a project may have or the impacts a project may have. And the planning tool is where we select a suite of projects that gives us the greatest impact in terms of, again, building and maintaining coastal wetlands and reducing storm surge-based flood risk. We also develop metrics based on model outputs and community characteristics to better understand how the changing coast and the projects we're evaluating impact different communities and different resources. In this section, I'll talk about some of the improvements since the 2017 plan. So, back to our diagram for a moment. This is just a point that the starting point for this master plan is the previous master plan. We are master planning. We are building off of the tools and processes used in previous plans, but we're updating those based on advances in the underlying science as well as based on feedback we received through the 2017 process and through the development of this plan. So, we're going to set through some of the examples of areas where we were able to incorporate new or newly available data. This is not an exhaustive list. There are quite a few thousand pages of documentation on our website to help talk about all of the model improvements that we've been able to incorporate. But here are a few examples. One of those areas is in our storm suite. So, this is a synthetic suite of synthetic storms that we use to project current and future exposure to flooding. This is developed by the Army Corps. The storm suite that we now have available to us is a tremendous improvement over the previous storm suite. In short, this gives us a greater ability to project existing and future storm surge. Another area of improvement is in our asset database. So, the storm surge modeling tells us what flood depths we may see in the future. The asset database helps tell us what will be damaged by that flooding, what sort of risk we experience due to flooding. And so, there have been huge advances in the availability and quality of asset databases. Additionally, working with one of our partners from Purdue University, David Johnson, put together a machine learning algorithm to estimate the first-floor elevations of homes based on Google Street View imagery. And so, this represents a huge improvement. We previously had to make assumptions about first-floor elevations based on a fairly limited number of surveys. Now, we have much more precise information or specific information on first-floor elevations. And of course, this makes a big difference when we're trying to understand what sort of damage a certain level of flooding would cause. This is another area that is very well documented elsewhere and I'll have to hit it at a really high level. But in addition to the new data that's available, we also have been able to reassess some of the assumptions we have about the systems that we're modeling. And so, the Coastwide Reference Monitoring System is a monitoring system that looks at vegetation, hydrology, soils, and a number of other variables. We now have 12, 15 years of data in this data set. It's allowed us to reassess some of the fundamental assumptions we have made about how wetlands respond to certain stresses and how they potentially recover from certain stresses. And this has been able to be incorporated into our modeling and represents a really significant improvement. Another set of significant advances has been in our understanding of environmental drivers. When we're talking about environmental drivers, some of these include climate-related drivers like temperature and sea level rise, as well as things like subsidence, which of course are not tied to climate. Despite these advancements, there remains a fair amount of uncertainty because of this known uncertainty, we take a scenario approach to better understand a range of possible future outcomes. So, you'll see in the plan and in this presentation, we talk about a lower environmental scenario and a higher environmental scenario. These are not meant to be precise predictions of future conditions. They're meant to help us understand a range of possible futures and to test the projects that we're evaluating against these future conditions. And our goal is to select a suite of projects that is robust, that will perform well whether we realize a more severe future condition, future environmental condition, or more moderate future environmental condition. In addition to the data and incorporating the best available science, we also have improvements in our process. And as I mentioned, a lot of this is based on feedback from the 2017 process. And so, one of the things we heard is that we need to take a more localized approach or a regional approach. The problems of the Scheneer Plain are not the problems of Terrebonne, are not the problems of the North Shore. And the solutions for those areas are different as well. And so, one of the steps was to develop regional work groups. We have five different regional work groups across the coast. These serve, as I mentioned earlier, to help develop project ideas. They also serve as a venue to continue to communicate progress throughout the plan. And they also served as a venue where we could hear and learn about region-specific issues. And if you open the plan, you'll see about a full third of the plan dedicated to these regional sections, where there are a lot of storylines about what is important and what is at risk in these different areas of the coast. And a lot of that came out of these regional work groups. Another process improvement is that we developed a new risk metric, the way that we measure risk, to try to better understand and better address questions of equity in our project selection process. And this is called expected annual structure damage. You may have seen it in the document or in the data viewer. And through this presentation, we'll talk about both expected annual structure damage and expected annual damage in dollars, which is a more traditional dollar value of future Another process improvement I touched on briefly is that we're selecting projects across a range of potential future outcomes for this plan. So, rather than pinning our plan to a simple projection of future conditions, we're trying to select projects that will be effective, again, whether we realize more severe future environmental conditions or more moderate future environmental conditions. And lastly, the previous improvements we've been talking about have largely been focused around the process we use to select projects. We also have what we're calling exploratory analysis, which are kind of one-off modeling efforts. They're not related to the project selection process, but are really there to help illustrate how the coast is going to change, perhaps in ways that folks may understand better than when we talk about these somewhat abstract metrics, changing by a percentage. And so, there are a number of examples of this that are written up in the plan in those regional sections. But one example is a high-tide flooding analysis that we did for a handful of communities. So, high-tide flooding, we're talking about flooding that you may see from kind of normal weather events, not tropical storms, not hurricanes. And there are areas of our coast that are currently at risk of high-tide flooding. There are areas of our coast that are likely to be at risk of high-tide flooding in the future. And so, we've identified a handful of communities, we've identified key places in those communities to try to understand, one, how, at what exposure do they have to high-tide flooding now? What exposure will they have to high-tide flooding 25 years from now? And what exposure to high-tide flooding might they have 50 years from now? So, the 2023 master plan, like the 2017 plan, this is a 50-year, $50 billion plan. We've identified 61 restoration projects, 12 structural risk reduction projects, and $1 billion is identified for non-structural risk reduction projects. And by non-structural, we're talking about elevating homes, floodproofing businesses, and voluntary acquisition in areas that are exposed to really high levels of flooding. So, a few highlights from the restoration projects. We've identified $2.7 billion in new diversions. We say new diversions because importantly, some of the diversions that perhaps you've seen in the news recently, the mid-Beretaria sediment diversion, the mid-Bretton sediment diversion, and the river reintroduction, Morra-Paswam, are considered in our baseline, in our future without action. These projects have identified funding sources, they're far enough along the process that we are going to assume that they'll be on the landscape, because we want to select additional projects that will work synergistically with those projects that won't have negative interactions with those projects. Another highlight, we're identifying over $19 billion in dredging projects. Dedicated dredging, marsh creation, barrier islands, remains a huge part of our restoration program. In this case, nearly four-fifths of the total budget is allocated to dredging projects. And then, the last bullet point, also identified a handful of project types that, for various reasons, don't really fit into our prioritization framework. And these are projects that are best evaluated on a case-by-case basis, but we want to set aside funding to illustrate the importance of them and the continued investment that we intend to have in those projects. And so, Barrier Islands are a type of project that CPRA has a barrier island sediment management program that is set up to prioritize on a different timescale and spatial scale than the master plan operates. Similarly, small-scale hydrologic restoration, oyster reef restoration, shoreline protection projects, these are effective projects typically on a smaller scale than the types of projects that we evaluate in the master plan. And these are projects that are best evaluated and prioritized through programs that exist like the Restoration Partnership Fund, like Quibro, like the Parish Matching Program. And so, what the master plan restoration projects deliver, 314 square miles of land is built or maintained that otherwise would be lost in year 50 under a lower scenario. Under a higher scenario, that's 233 square miles, though we do see a greater benefit in year 40, that some of the projects that are identified and put on the landscape early in the process are unable in the process are unable to keep up with sea level rise and higher rates of subsidence in that higher scenario. That's why you see the dip between year 40 and year 50. So this is our lower scenario in year 10, 20, 30, 40, and 50. And now we're going to switch to the higher scenario in year 10, 20, 30, 40, and 50. And as I mentioned this before, but the dews are land change, the land that is lost versus open water, the greens are land that is built or maintained. With risk reduction, we have identified 12 structural risk reduction projects for a cost of about $14 billion. We've also identified $11.2 billion of the master plan budget that is best allocated towards non-structural risk reduction. So that is to say, of the $25 billion, our analysis suggests that $11.2 billion of that is best invested in non-structural risk reduction. In this master plan, we are not identifying specific communities as being in the master plan or out of the master plan for non-structural risk reduction. This is largely due to the scale at which we're evaluating these projects, which is a community scale. And the scale at which these are typically implemented is usually a case by like a structure-by-structure basis, or sometimes a street. But within the scale that we're evaluating, a community that maybe say man-to-man build or maybe really good investments for non-structural, maybe not-so-good investments for non-structural. And by potentially selecting or not selecting a project, we may preclude certain areas from having access to non-structural funding. We don't want to do that, so we have not identified specific projects as in or out. But what we do have is a lot of information on the amount of risk in these communities, the amount of risk that could be bought down through different non-structural interventions, as well as information on the residual risk if you were to implement some of these non-structural measures. And that can serve as starting point for people who are interested in potentially evaluating these alternatives, or people who are interested in trying to solicit funding for non-structural projects. So these are future with-action flood depths. One of the maps on the side there, these are 1% annual exceedance probability flood depths with the plan. You see that fairly sharp change in colors where you have the projects, the structural projects with much lower flood depths behind the structural protection projects. And this is the difference between the future with and future without. And so you see decreased flood depths behind those structures, you see increased flood depths in front of those structures, that is, the water tends to stack up against those structures when you put them in. You also see some reduction in flood depths in the Scheneer Plain. That's not tied to structural protection. That is the result of restoration projects that will be cleared. So that illustrates that these restoration projects do have an impact on storm surge. And this is what it looks like in terms of the change in risk. And so the blues and greens are reductions in risk. We see that signature behind the structural projects. And we also see that signature out in the Lake Charles, Greater Lake Charles area, where those restoration projects do have an impact on reducing storm surge and risk compared to a future without action. And so to summarize the risk reduction, compared to a future without action, fully implementing the plan can result in a 70% reduction of risk under our lower scenario and a 60% reduction in risk under the higher environmental scenario, as measured in expected annual damage in dollars. If we're measuring that in the expected annual structure damage, it shows a similar effect, reducing coastwide risk by around 78% under the lower scenario and 65% under the higher scenario. So this is an annual reduction in expected annual damage in dollars in year 50 of $10.8 billion under the lower scenario and $14.6 billion under the higher scenario. So this level of investment could mean that in 50 years, under our lower environmental scenario, Louisiana has less flood risks from hurricanes and tropical storms than we do today. So to come full circle, where we are today, we are asking for public comments on this draft plan. We will incorporate those comments into our final plan, which we will see board, the CPRA board, to approve on April 19th, and then submit the final plan to the legislature shortly after. And these, again, are the four ways that you can have a public comment and submit it to the record. And that will be covered.
Very good. Thanks, Stu. So we'll now move into the public comment portion, and I went through this earlier. If you would like to speak a comment, you have a green card that's a statement card at the top. You'll fill that out with just your name, address, city zip, and turn that into a CPRA staff member. There's a bunch of us around the room, so go ahead and turn that in. We'll take them here for the next two minutes, and then we'll go through those in the order we received them. You'll speak your comment here into the microphone over to my left, and a poll reporter will just note and document the comment for you. That'll enter into the official record. To be clear, too, this is just for the master plan. After we finish that period, we'll move into the annual plan and take comments there. So this is just master plan, public comments. Go ahead and fill out the statement cards, and you can hand those in to any CPRA person around the room. If you would like to submit a written comment and not speak at the microphone, you can do that anytime between now and when you leave. There are comment cards that you can see, there's space to write in. Write those, drop them over the door when you leave. So we'll take a couple minutes. You give everybody a chance to turn in statement cards. While we're doing that, if you decide you don't want to provide comment today, we are taking until the 25th. I know Stu said this a couple times, but just to go through it again, there's plenty of other ways to submit a comment other than today. The 25th of March, sorry. Give everybody one more minute here, and then we'll get rolling. So make sure you turn in a statement card if you'd like to speak a comment. If you want to speak and have a statement card, you can turn it in now. Okay, looks like we just have one.
Last call to grab one or zip one, let's go down.
Okay, Mr. Doug Dagel, you can come to the front microphone here on my left. You'll just have to speak your name into the microphone, and then you can leave your
Thank you. Doug Dagel, I'm the coordinator of the Louisiana Hypoxia Working Group. So I had a question, having just kind of skimmed through it quickly. The 2012 and 2017 versions of the master plan both included the Gulf Hypoxia Action Plan and their future. This one doesn't seem to, so just had a question about that. You know, it has something that didn't exist in previous plan, which is Louisiana watershed issue, but Hypoxia Action Plan is still going on, and the state's still part of it. So anyway, just posing a question about that.
All right, thank you.
I'm going to call an all. We don't typically respond to public comment, but Doug, that's a good comment, and I think you will see reference to that in the beyond the master plan portion of the draft that you see now in a time. Appreciate your time.
Okay, that's all about it. So we'll roll in now to the annual plan presentation. And so do a brief intro here, and then Brandon Oz, the executive director, is going to walk you through the fiscal year 2024 annual plan. So this one outlines our spending later, the next fiscal year. Same process here. We'll go through the presentation and then do the public comment period. So if you want to submit a speak, a written, I mean, I'm sorry, a spoken comment, you'll fill out a blue statement card, so those are around as well.
All right, Jerez, thank you. I appreciate that. And thanks to all of you for being here this evening. I, we've had a number of these meetings across the coast already, and one of the things I've been able to say is that I didn't see a lot of familiar faces at those meetings. And that's really a good thing. It means some new people are coming into the coastal program and getting involved. And I can say that here this evening, so I see a lot of new faces, I see some young faces in particular. I want to thank you for being here and being involved in Louisiana's coastal program. I'd be remiss if I didn't say there are a lot of, and I'm going to go ahead and say it, old faces in the room as well. Folks like me that have been around for a little while, folks that have been involved in the master planning process, really from the get-go, and have laid the foundation for Louisiana's coastal program through the master plan and the annual plan that I'm going to talk with you about here in a bit. And so to those folks, I want to say thank you as well. Chip, you know, mentioned that we're going to talk master plan and the annual plan, and that can be a little confusing at times. I just want to kind of reiterate, the master plan really is kind of a high-level, longer-term, let's set the vision for our coast and the things that we think are the priorities for the coast. The annual plan that I'm going to talk with you about really takes it down a little bit into another level and really gets into the details. Okay, out of that master plan, what are the things that we're really going to do? What are the things that we're going to do in the next fiscal year? What are the things that we plan to do in the next three fiscal years? And so that's what I'm going to talk to you all about here today, our fiscal year 2024 annual plan. As has been mentioned before, you've heard this a lot already, but public comment cards are with blue cards in the back. If you'd like to make comments today, please fill one of those out just so we can identify you. But we'll take your comments through March 25th, as well, both written comments and purple comments at three subsequent meetings that we'll have in addition to this one as well. So you see the information there related to making those comments. Timeline, already talked a little bit about that, but we're essentially on the same time as the master plan. We'll be presenting a final annual plan to the board on April 19th, and then ultimately submit that to the legislature in April of this year for consideration and approval. So when we're talking about what we want to do in a given fiscal year, we want to talk about what we think our revenues are going to be and what our expenditures are going to be. And so you see here a list of what we think the money coming to the coastal program might be in the upcoming fiscal year, and we're asking, essentially asking the legislature for authorization to expend those funds on the projects that you'll see listed in our annual plan. The first three, a first really, well, let me back up. The first category of funding you see that's related to royalty sharing of offshore oil and gas production. The next three categories, you see the NRDA, the NIFLIF, and Restore related to BP oil-spill funding, that are part of the settlement associated with that natural disaster, that man-made disaster. You see a Quipra funding category there that is related to a federal program where federal funds come to the state that are matched by the state for restoration. You see some other state funds there as well. So we anticipate expending all of the revenues that could come to the state in this upcoming fiscal year, and that totals to about $1.7 billion. So another record-breaking year. If all those funds come to the state, and we get to expend all of those in this upcoming year. One of the things we're proud of is that about 85% of those funds are anticipated to be spent on construction, so building projects and getting those projects on the ground. And you can see some of the other categories there, they're relatively minor in comparison, of course, but we operate and maintain our projects and monitor those projects. We don't just walk away from them, right? There are ongoing programs and initiatives, some of the things that Stu mentioned earlier, Bear Island Conference and Monitoring Program, some of our adaptive management programs and things. We obviously have operating costs, and then we also plan for engineering design projects to get those into the construction pipeline. So I mentioned this isn't just a forecast of the next fiscal year, it also looks two additional years into the future. So if you look out at FY '25 and FY '26 respectively, you see that while we don't, we're not expecting to hit that $1.7 billion range, we still are over the $1 billion range, which is kind of where we need to be with a 50-year, $50 billion plan, right? And so again, you notice that the dollars that are being expended on construction are increasing for the next year and then in that sort of high age range for FY '26 as well. So that's good news for getting projects on the ground. Sort of the annual plan by the numbers, just you'll see some of these here, mentioned $1.5 billion allocated for construction. That includes 20 dredging projects, a large portion of what we intend to do in the future. We talk a lot about our diversions, river diversions, and those are very, very important to the coastal program. Obviously dredging is a huge component of the coastal program as well. 20 of the projects in the upcoming fiscal year, we anticipate will be dredging projects that will dredge about 73.5 million cubic yards of material. That's close to 30 superdomes worth of material. That's a lot of, a lot of dirt, if you will, being moved around the coast. Those, that will benefit about 14 and a half thousand acres of our coastal wetlands. We'll have about 118 projects active in the upcoming fiscal year. And if you think about the level of investment that we're talking about, $1.7 billion over a year, that will result in a little over 10,000 correct jobs. So a significant driver in the economy across our coast and indeed in the state. So getting into some of the specifics and what we plan to do, where, we're going to start in the southwestern portion of the state and the southwest region. We'll have 15 active projects, nine projects in construction, and six of those projects in engineering and design. And so you see projects like the Cameron Gulf shoreline project that will be extended to southwest coastal Louisiana project, a federal project that will call share with the Corps of Engineers on to implement some significant non-structural features in that area, and the Long Point Bayou Marsh Creation Project in this portion of the state. Moving further to the east and the south, central region of the state, we anticipate 41 projects being active in this fiscal year, 26 of those in construction, 14 in engineering design, and a project in planning. And those include projects like the Waukesha Marsh Creation Project, Ganges of the Gulf, Rose Gold Metal Project, those are risk reduction projects, levy projects, and the social portion of our state that we saw perform quite well during Hurricane Ida two years ago, the Homon Aviation Canal Lock Complex Project, and the Grand Bayou Pump Station Project, just to name a few. Moving again further to the east, southeast region of the state, we anticipate 62 active projects. 45 of those will be in construction in this upcoming fiscal year, 16 in engineering and design, and another project in planning in this region as well. So projects in the Laffite area, like the Paylet Basin Title Protection Project, the West Shore Lake Contra Train Project that somebody may have heard of that is under construction now, and the large-scale Barataria Marsh Creation Project that's being led by our friends and partners at NOAA. Some, just other projects in the region that I mentioned, the Lakeport Marsh Creation Project, one of the largest, not one of the largest, marsh creation project that will ever have been built by CPRA, River Reintroduction of Moorea Falls Swamp and Luge Island Pump Station, just to name a few of those. So as part of our annual plan, we also developed an annual plan for the Chapala Basin Program. So the Chapala Basin Program was moved under CPRA's purview by the legislature in 2018. There will be two Chapala Basin Program-specific public meetings similar to this, and so more to come on those. It will be in the upcoming weeks. It will be specific again to the Chapala Basin Program. I certainly wanted to touch on it, it's an important part, becoming a more important part, certainly of our program. The Chapala Basin is connected to our coast, the knee bone is connected to the leg bone, if you will, and so all these things are interconnected. But some of the projects that are anticipated this year for the Chapala Basin Program include proposed dredging at Big Bayou Pigeon, near its intersection with the Pigeon, and on down Big Pigeon Ways, the Grimmet Canal Improvements Project, Point Combe Water Flow, Water Quality Improvements Project, the Henderson Lake Water Management Project is nearly going to bid, it's been designed, and we're getting ready to start construction on that project, happy to announce that. The Murphy Lake Depth Restoration Project is also underway, there's some geotechnical engineering, some preliminary engineering that's being done on that project, and the East Grand Lake Upper Region Project is in permitting at the moment. Some other projects include the VSA Swamp Base Camp Project, Sandy Cove Boat Launch Project, Cajun Coast Welcome Center Trail Project, improvements to the boat launch at Bayou Pigeon. And then something that has been done for some time is an update. We're talking about annual plan, right, and coastal master plan, but the Chapala Basin Program has a master plan as well, and we anticipate redoing that. It hasn't been done in nearly 30 years, 20 years, 20, 25 years, something along those lines. And so we anticipate updating that master plan in this coming fiscal year as well. So much like the master plan, we have a viewer available to folks. You can access that viewer at ap24.c coastal.la.gov. You can get some You can get some, there's some nice resources there related to some of the projects that have been built or being planned in the future, videos, press clippings, news articles, and project information associated with that, those projects as well. So, I encourage you to go there and take a look and a little bit of a deeper dive in the Annual Plan. Of course, the document is there as well for your review and to view as well. So, we will move on. I'm going to turn it back over to you. We'll move back into our public comment period. I did want to say that anybody that you see around the room that's got a name tag like this is associated, either works for CPRA or is working with us on this. And so, we understand a lot of times maybe folks don't want to get up or ask a question, you know, in public, but we'll be here as long as we need to be here tonight to talk with you about either the Annual Plan, the Jaffa Lie Basin Program, Annual Plan for the Master Plan. So, we'll sort of move into kind of the formal public comment period, but I just wanted to let folks know that we're around. If you have a question or a comment, we're happy to have a one-on-one conversation with you as well. So, I want to thank everybody again for coming out tonight, and I'll turn it back over to Teres.
All right, so the same thing as last time. If you would like to submit a formal written comment on the Annual Plan, you'll turn in a blue statement card. Team around the room has those cards as well. We'll take those for a couple minutes here, and then anyone who submitted one can go ahead and come up to the mic. Otherwise, we've got comment cards for the Annual Plan separate from the Master Plan that you can write and submit as well. Give everybody in there, too. Okay, one more minute here. If anybody else has a statement card, hold it up. If you need one, we can get you one. Okay, we'll go ahead and start with Mr. Dean Wilson. If you want to go up to the mic over there, state your name for the record, and then you can go ahead and leave your statement.
This is Dean Wilson. I work for a Jaffa Lie Basin Keeper and the executive director. I want to make a couple of comments about the Jaffa Lie Annual Plan for 2024. One is the Big Bayou Pigeon Project. I didn't have time because I just found out about this meeting yesterday to really review it. It's my understanding that they're going to dredge Bayou Pigeon, Big Bayou Pigeon, and dispose of the dredge material on the side that will create spore banks. If that's the case, that would be catastrophic for the area. There's an EPA report that, you know, it was done in 1979 with respect to congressional mandates that talks about a detriment of dredging and disposing of the dredge material on the side of Bayous that will limit people's access and fish's access to the wetlands. Also, it will stop overbank flowing, and it will be very devastating for the area. So, part of our comments will be, there will be, right, it will be to either put that dredge material in a hill or remove it from the Jaffa Lie Basin altogether. The other one is East Valley Project, which is, as you know, when you do a river diversion, you create wetlands and you create land. And that's what it is. It's a sediment diversion project. It's a total of 12 cuts to introduce river water through sand and silt delegating to the swamps that will fill up those areas. It already happened in Buffalo Cove. We lost two tonnage wetlands, another so-called water quality project. It happened in Wop Bayou, and you're going to fill those wells up. And the Jaffa Lie Basin flood capacity is very, very important. Not only you destroy the habitat for birds and other animals, but also you're destroying the flood capacity that we need to protect all of our batteries to the audience or the chemical plants. You know, floods can go all the way to Namib yet. I mean, if humans cannot safely survive in Central Louisiana, you don't have a deeper Jaffa Lie Basin to contain a major flood that you had to divert, this is the flood you had to divert around 140 miles from Sinsport all the way to the Gulf. That's the reason you put the lakes like 18 miles apart on average. It's because you need flood capacity, and you're destroying the flood capacity for the Jaffa Lie Basin. So, me and other groups called the Jaffa Lie Basin Coalition are in very strong opposition for the project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Got one more from Mr. Dan. Prose, there you go.
Hello, I'm Dan Prose with UST Geological Survey. I just wanted to say thank you all for all the hard work you guys have done, and I'm looking forward to seeing these projects get started and be completed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I'll bring it back on this slide just so everybody can see the other options to submit comments tonight. You're free to fill out a comment card before you leave, or you can submit those via email, mail, online. We've got computers in the back of the room if you'd rather type it. So, if you want to make a comment before you leave, grab anybody from CPRA, we're happy to help you with that. Or if you have questions, we'll be around here for a little while after. That concludes all of our presentations for tonight, so thank you all for coming.